I muted.
Okay, Lloyd, it's, I'm going to start the meeting. We can get started and get going. Here comes Dave now, so perfect. I'm gonna call a meeting to order, and Kim, you have a roll call in front of you, or you want me to go through a process here?
At your pleasure, Mayor.
Okay, the record shows that this entire city council is here, along with our attorney, our staff, including yourself. That we're going to continue to move forward. Are there any changes or corrections to the, or changes or additions to the agenda? Anybody have any thoughts around that? If not, we have a consent agenda which includes the minutes from my January 12 meeting and the report on city accounts payable. What's your pleasure on those two items? Any questions?
This is Callan, a move to adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
John, was that you that made the second?
Me and Scott both. It was a tie.
Okay, Kim, take a pick.
Heard, I heard Counselor Sullivan.
I did too. Okay. Thank you. So we have motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If those in favor, please use your yes or no button.
I'm still finding it, so just, I vote yes.
Go to participants, you'll, it'll come up and it's down on the lower, bottom side.
Oh, participants, okay, different places.
You get the panel on the side.
Got it, thank you.
You're right.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, guys, Scott, I'm missing somebody, am I not?
No, everyone's, everyone's there.
Oh, I couldn't see Scott, my feet, okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Guest presentation, Sergeant Miller, over the law enforcement report, please.
Yeah, so, um, we had fourteen traffic citations last month in January. There were twenty-four warnings issued, four adults arrested, and one hundred and twenty-nine complaints investigated or called in. Millersburg had one hundred and sixty-two point seven-five hours out of the one hundred and fifty-three hours contracted. And I see there that, um, on the slideshow or whatnot, it says December of 2020, but it should be January of 21. So, Millersburg, with all the, um, just of note, you guys probably saw through the report that a lot of catalytic converters have been taken out of RVs at Mackay's or trucks. It's kind of a trend throughout the county in some of the areas with RV storage, and/or, you know, places where large trucks are stored. There are no leads currently, however, throughout our office, there are a few frequent people who engage in criminal activity that we are keeping a close eye on as potential perpetrators and thefts, or, you know, stealing those catalytic converters. And then, I talked to Kim earlier, or, excuse me, last week, and I suddenly touched base with her this week. In the report, there is nothing that I saw from police reports that would suggest this was anything to do with Millersburg, but there were two reports out of Millersburg regarding the unemployment fraud, where employers were notified that their employees had filed unemployment. However, they were two separate. One was out of Samaritan Health and one was out of a co-op energy, and then there, we have another one, we just haven't taken a police report on out of Millersburg as well, but nothing suggests that anything came out of, you know, a breach out of the city or anything, and there, of course, is no leads on, on that, but there are several of those floating around the county as one of the new scams, and I'm not sure how, how that's being done exactly. Other than that, you know, Millersburg, there was not a lot of criminal activity throughout the month of January. There was quite a bit of, you know, there's always the complaints of dogs off leashes or, you know, running a large in the park, and one real recently, actually, for this month, and our animal control who focuses on dogs mostly. Ken Walters, he's been doing a heck of a job hanging out in Millersburg quite a bit, and will issue sites or issue warnings, you know, depending on how many times he's met with these people and whatnot, so there's kind of an uptick in that, but the weather's been fairly decent and people have been out, so otherwise, is there any questions I can answer from anybody?
Counsel? Beth, on, yeah, go ahead.
I just, two things, you, the counsel may notice, in the packet, Beth updated, she realized there was some stuff that was missed, so she sent us an update, so we included that in the slide, so that may look a little bit different, if you're seeing something different there. I was picking on an update that Beth sent us on some information after the report went out. And also, we had, I just wanted to give kudos to the sheriff's office, I think probably one of the citations or warnings. Earlier this week, we had a resident call in and said that they had noticed someone speeding on Millersburg Drive, and he was pleased to, to let us know that, right after he noticed it, he saw a deputy pulling him over, and wanted to call and thank, thank the city for the proactive.
Wonderful, yeah, I'll pass the word along. Right place, right time. There has been a few other complaints of speeding, and I know one of the deputies has been out on that specific road. I know some today, earlier this morning and late yesterday afternoon. And, you know, hasn't found anything to, you know, jive with the complaint, however, him and I were chatting, because I was out there yesterday as well, and, you know, these residential streets are twenty-five miles an hour, unless otherwise, if they were posted, and when you live on a residential street and you're outside walking, or you're out there with your kids or your animals, cars going twenty-five or thirty miles an hour look really fast, so any, anytime the city, I would suggest, gets a complaint from anybody, if there's any chance a follow-up question could be asked of them, if they noticed a specific time of day would be helpful, just so that maybe we can put in that call that generates kind of around that time of day that triggers a deputy to, to go to the area if they're available, so.
Hey, thank you for the level of detail. I appreciate your comments and the report as a whole. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments in the council? If not, thank you. Appreciate your.
All right, talk to you guys next month.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to a public comment. Can I take care of the only public with us? I could be wrong.
Public. Hack stats are here.
Woo!
Okay, I'm sorry, Lori, I see your head now.
I was gonna say, that, that is the only public I see.
And I already asked my question beforehand.
Okay.
On Alexander though, too, it sometimes seems like they travel pretty fast down at our end of the road.
Yeah, they do. And one comment Beth made was, you know, when you're walking down a sidewalk, and you're in a twenty-five or thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, that speed seems awfully fast, when it really isn't. And I don't drive, I'm not comfortable driving twenty-five in my own streets, because it seems too fast. So, but Melersburg Drive, Alexander are problematic in that regard, for sure, as well as Woods, if you're walking Woods Road, you know that.
Woods is really bad, because it's forty-five.
Yeah, I know, and ODOT wanted to make it fifty, we pushed back on it really hard and got them to stay at forty-five.
And that's why I asked about the sidewalks, just because there is a lot of people do walk Woods to Alexander, make that big huge loop around Millersburg.
I know. I have a neighbor that does it four out of five days, it's been done it for years. Him and his wife, two of them, and I don't know why, you know, I, I walk also, but I go down to, down to Sweetwater State, down through that way, Old Rebecca Ridge, I stay off of Woods Road, I still get three miles.
Yeah, well, we usually walk the woods, but I have to say, ninety percent of the drivers are very courteous and do move over for you, for the most part. But there are some that don't move over and they push that forty-five.
And I know Janelle and Kevin are focused on this a lot, and everything that we do is a constant focus. We are a city of walkers. I've been saying that for many years. We need to remember that. I had a problem with the previous city manager maintaining a sidewalks, because we are a city of walkers, and we need to value that and make sure we continue to focus on that. I hope we, I think we're doing it, and Woods Road is a classic example where we need to get acquisition of properties to get to the right way to make the sidewalks. It's on our list.
I would say people control their speed pretty well until they hit the park, but it seems like if they go, once they get west of the park on Alexander, it seems like the speed increases just because there's less houses. It's not quite as heavy residentially.
Lori, did, in deference to what the Sergeant Miller ones, do you have a particular time of day? Because I could pass this along to her.
I'll start paying more attention. I think it's just kind of in general, once they get to the very ends, very west end, people go faster, I think probably faster than thirty-five, but.
Well, Janelle, will it change when the subdivision behind us goes in? Will that speed limit change, or will Alexander always be at thirty-five?
The subdivision going in will not change the speed on Alexander, so you may be aware, and it was kind of alluded to earlier, changing the speed on a road is a process that has to go through ODOT, and we have recently requested, I believe the county put in a request for them to look at Old Salem Road again, but you know, we could look at Alexander again in the future, however, I suspect that with Alexander's designation as a collector and what's on it, it's going to be hard to get it lowered below thirty-five.
Okay, well, just curious.
This is Callan. I could shed a little light on it. Many years ago, the council tried to change the speed limit on Alexander, and we were under the impression we had the, the authority to do that, and we did, temporarily. And, yeah, and we actually reduced it to twenty-five, I believe it was, and it came to our attention that the city did not have authority to reflect a little bit what Janelle's saying, and then we learned a little bit more that there is a, quite an extensive process of trying to get that reduced, and at the time, I believe we've looked at this before and, and felt that it will be difficult to get it reduced, because they do a study on reflection of what people normally travel, and anyways, it's difficult. So I could just say, we did try at one point, and then the roadmaster came back and said, no, that's not going to work, and we had, had to change the signs. Yeah, we even had signs and everything out there, so.
Well, I just know, once this subdivision goes in, you're going to have a lot more traffic on Alexander, since it's in and out to that subdivision at this time.
And one thing that is a recent change is they have changed the process for how they evaluate the speeds on roads. There's a, there's an alternate now to the method that Council Callan was describing, where it's just based on what speed people are driving. They can take some other things into account now. So after this one goes through on Old Salem Road, or after we go through that process, we may find that it's worth revisiting some of the other streets, but I would wait until after we see how that goes without that.
No, well, that's good news. So, yeah, let's keep that on our radar, and once the other development comes through.
All right, thanks.
Okay, moving on, any other public comment? Anybody else here that I'm not aware of? Okay, moving on to public hearing on the water and sewer rate increase. I was talking about the process from, please.
Mayor, there, I see, I do see somebody, a Jenna, but I don't, that's somebody new, but I don't know if they intend to speak or if they're just.
I thought you, thank you, Kim, I thought you was part of the, one of the consultants, I could be wrong.
I could be wrong.
No, Deb is here, she's our consultant. Looks like we did have, have someone join during the public comment period.
We do have a Jenna, and Jenna, if you have anything you'd like to say during the public comment, now would be the time, it would be another time also at the end of the meeting. So feel free to speak up. If not, then we'll move forward to the, to the public hearing for water and sewer rates. This process will look like this. I'll open the hearing up, have staff give a report, we'll look for public testimony, followed by questions from, of staff. Okay, then we'll have closing public testimony for anybody else who has not spoken, and then conclusion finally. So, I'm going to, excuse me, open the public hearing. Tonight, we're holding the hearing regarding proposed changes to the water and sewer rate structure and future rate increases. Committee will proceed as follows. Staff will make presentation. Anyone who wishes to address the council will be given a proper, given the opportunity. Members of the public will have three minutes each for testimony. Counselors may ask questions of staff or anyone who testifies, and then I will call the, I will not call that public hearing to order, and I'll turn it over to Janelle for presentation.
I'm just getting the right slideshow up now. I gotta switch, switch slideshows to do this one. So, all right, we have a slideshow that we can go through. This is very similar, almost exactly the same as what we went through at the open house a couple of weeks ago, and it's a repeat of a lot of information that council's already heard, so would you like me to just go ahead and go through it? We have a couple of members from the public on here, who may or may not have heard this before, I'm not sure.
Let's, let's test that, Janelle, for a minute. Start with Kevin and Lori. Have you been, made aware of this yet? Have you seen this document yet, or is it brand new to you?
We haven't, I don't know if we've actually seen it, but we don't have sewer and water to worry about, because we're on a well and septic system, so.
Okay, okay.
Probably hadn't paid attention to it anyway.
We did get a letter about it.
Okay, I don't want to circumvent or shorten any opportunity here, and we make sure to do our thing, but I'm just curious about who here wants to hear this fully lengthy discussion. So Jenna, could you let me know, please, are you here specifically for the hearing? Could you please indicate one way or the other?
And Mayor, we, if we don't, if you're not sure, we can still go through the slides and just go through them a little more quickly, and then go into more depth, if that's, you know, that's helpful.
I'll let you, I'll let you make that call. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll go through the slides. Deb is here, she's our consultant, who has been working on this for, it's been a while. A couple of years into this. And she may, she'll be able to jump in and share more in-depth information as needed. So, we've got some information on the background, a review of the rate structures, what bill impacts that we, that will occur from the rate structure changes, and then talk about rate adjustments, schedule of rate, the rate structure implementation and rate adjustments, and then have time for questions, so, or comments, since this is the public hearing. This is the same presentation we gave at the open house. So, a little bit of background. Last time rates were reviewed was in 2014. At that time, sewer rate increases were adopted but not fully implemented in subsequent years. Beginning in May 2018, when we started working with, with Ed Gallardi and her company for a study of our water and sewer rates and our system development charges, which were previously adopted. Had quite a few presentations at meetings along the way, and I, what I should have added in here, maybe I did? I don't think I did, but the open house we just had. So, rate structures, why are we changing our rate structures? So, a rate structure is how we're charged for our water or sewer service. So, we wanted to address inequities in how the sewer service is charged. So, right now, everyone pays the same flat rate, regardless of actual usage, every residential customer does, and then commercial also actually pays a flat rate that was determined a long time ago. The new structure includes a base service charge and a volume charge, so it'll be more similar to our water rate structures, where you pay a base charge for being connected to the system, but then you pay based on how much you use. For sewer, though, we don't want the volume charge, how much you use, to be based, to be influenced by irrigation use, right? We don't put a sewer, a meter on everybody's sewer line to measure how much water is going down the sewer. We measure that by how much water use there is in that particular home, and then the amount of water returned to the sewer. So, in the summer months, a lot of, a lot of folks view irrigation that doesn't go back into the sewer, so we want to look at the average winter month water usage, or month, in our case. And account for different strength of waste for commercial industrial customers, so we do want to charge those who have higher strength of waste that requires more treatment, a higher rate, because then they'll be paying more of their fair share, fair share of cost. And then we want to modernize the rate structure. So our current rate structure is what's called a declining block structure for water, which means at a certain point, the more water you use, the less you pay, and that was really based on an old structure designed to sell water, not to conserve water, and that's really changed over time, and it's no longer the the standard, and it's not the way that regulatory agencies are pushing us to go. So, all of these changes are what we call revenue neutral, meaning when we make these changes, and we'll go into that in a little more detail, the city's not collecting more total revenue than we are right now. We want to keep that constant. We're just changing how that is allocated within the user groups to be more equitable. And, you know, both sewer and water will continue to have a significant base charge, that's the fixed charge, due to the fact that most of the utility system costs are fixed. They don't change with your flow, your, the cost to put the pipe in the ground, the cost to have the treatment system in place, that doesn't change with the volume of water that each customer uses. It has to be there, no matter what. So, that's why we have a base charge and a volume charge. Deb, did you want to add anything there?
Sorry, I was on mute. No, I think you're, you're doing great.
Nothing, if you think, think I should add anything. All right, so our current water rates are, what you see on the slide here, I won't spend a lot of time on them, because people are probably pretty familiar with it. There's a, your base charge is based on your meter size, and then, again, this declining block structure, the more you use, the less you pay. Sorry, I have a lot of things on my screen covering up my notes, so. The, the declining block was also used to reflect notions of economy of scale in the past. The cost per unit decreases as more water is sold, but over a longer term, costs to produce and distribute the water are increasing due to all the regulatory, environmental factors, everything going on, so that, that doesn't even that argument for the declining block structure, or that reason for it, doesn't really apply anymore. It's pretty outdated. So, the revised water structure doesn't look a lot different in, in how it works. The numbers have changed. Other than the, the blocks, we had a block one and block two that are now just the same. So, this is uniform volume rates, meaning it's uniformed, regardless of the volume, and then a fixed charge by meter size and class. And you probably noticed, industrial does have a lower volume charge than residential and commercial, and that's because residential and commercial have higher peak demands on the system, or generally for irrigation, where industrial tends to be very constant throughout, well, it may vary based on things happening within their facility, but they're not seasonal variations generally, so the system has to be designed to accommodate those peaks, and residential and commercial are what contributes to those peaks more than industrial does. See, the percent of revenue from fixed charge increases from about twenty to thirty percent, reflecting current industry standards, so before about twenty percent of the cost, the revenue that we were getting was in fixed charges, now it's thirty percent. So we have increased the fixed and decreased the variable. All right, sewer rates. So, this is pretty simple. It's been a flat monthly charge for a long time, but the amounts have gone up at times over the years, but it's, it's just been a flat rate. Industrial customers who have processed wastewater discharge do get charged based on sampling that, and that doesn't change. We adopted that a few years ago, and we will continue to have that as part of the rate structure. So the revised structure for sewer now has a fixed and a volume charge. Most people here are probably interested in the residential fixed and volume charges, but we also have them for commercial and industrial high and regular strength users, and this is that differentiation between the strength of the waste we were talking about. All right, so summary of bill impacts. For residential bills, the volume-based sewer structure increases bills for large volume users. So, if you were charged a flat rate before, and now you're charged based on the volume, if you are a high-volume user, you're probably going to end up paying a little bit more. But water's gone the other direction. We've shifted more of those costs to fixed cost, so you might see a little bit of a decrease in your water bill. And overall, the building, the overall bill tends to decrease for small volume users, of both water and sewer. Industrial bills decrease slightly for the class as a whole, but then there are some increases due to the higher fixed charge and the industrial treatment rates. And then commercial is actually generally where we're seeing the increase due to the volume-based sewer billing, because commercial has been, for years, not charged based on their usage charge based on some flat rate that was determined quite a while ago. And then there are larger increases for higher strength customers. So, combined residential bill impacts. So we, we tend to think of six units of water, which is the CCF, that's a hundred cubic feet, as kind of an average use, in this case, five. So for a small winter average water user, and, and also a small user in the summer, they don't have a lot of irrigation, there's a decrease in their combined water and sewer bills. Or an average with five units in the winter and twenty in the summer, so they're doing some irrigation or some, you know, additional water use in the summer, there's actually a decrease of about two point three percent. And then for the higher users is where you start to see the increases. The total water and sewer utility bill for a residential home with average water use will decrease by two hundred and fifty, two dollars and fifty-three cents per month under the new structure. And this is just a little graphic that shows these, you can't read this probably because it's very small, but this is a number of accounts on the vertical axis, and this green dashed line is the, the zero percent. There's no change. So more residents are going to see a slight decrease. About one quarter of the customers won't see much change at all. About forty percent will see a slight decrease, and about two percent will see a larger increase of more than twenty percent. And then this is just a little comparison. The date's a little bit old, from 2019, 20, when we pulled this data from all the communities, but comparison of where Millersburg falls compared to some other nearby cities. And then we have some draft resolutions here, which I can open up if there's a desire to dig into them. These will be presented for council consideration and approval at the next council meeting in March, so they aren't, there isn't a proposal to adopt them tonight. This is where we get into the real details of how the structures will work, and if there are questions, I think after the, we get to the rest of the presentation here, we can jump back, especially sewer, you know, there have been questions about how this is going to work for people who snowbird, leave in the winter. That detail is all in these resolutions. So that was the rate structures. Now, rate adjustments. This is, this is the part that nobody wants to have to do and nobody wants to have to pay, but we need to make sure the system keeps working and it's funded the way it needs to be. So why are rate adjustments necessary? They're needed in any utility, cover the costs of running the utility, meet federal guidelines, improve infrastructure, form regular maintenance, fix the things that are broken, respond to inflation. So, if we stay on top of the needed rate adjustments along the way, then, then we'll keep the revenues in line with expenditures and reduce the likelihood of needing large increases in the future. That's the goal. We don't want to have to come, you know, in the future and say, we need a We don't want to have to come, you know, in the future and say, we need a huge rate increase. And that's happened in other nearby communities because they didn't stay on top of this. And, and it's, we're a little bit in that position with sewers, as most people are aware, because of some deferrals from the last several years. Deb provided a little information here. This is rate increases have been trending about two times inflation nationally due to the need to invest in system replacements and upgrades. So we're, we're fortunate that our systems are not, um, they're all relatively new for the most part, but we need to keep them in good shape. So for water, the last water rate increase was in 2012 and that was done to address a financial deficit. And it was intended to be the first phase to eliminate declining block rate structure, the declining block rate structure. The regular, uh, regular increases are needed to keep up with inflation and continue to meet operating and capital costs. So sewer, there were no increases between 2011 and 2014. And then 2015, there was one increase. And that was, I mentioned earlier, was intended to be the first of several, but the rest didn't take place. So between 2016 and 19, there were no increases. The last sewer rate increase was January of last year. And that was the first of five recommended seven and a half percent increases. So we can catch up in the sewer, uh, sewer fund. This, because of some delays in implementing the rate structure changes, went ahead and did this increase earlier so it wouldn't fall behind further. So this seven and a half percent increase was part of the overall plan that has been developed to get things on track. So after that, uh, regular smaller increases will be needed to keep up with inflation and continue to meet operating and capital costs. So this is the proposed rate, the schedule of, um, rate increases for water, 3%. For sewer, we have several more seven and a half percent in the future. And then we'll drop down to 3% to match water. This is, this is intended to keep things on track for the next five years, but we'll need to re, continually reevaluate and make sure that, that those numbers are still the correct numbers. So we are here at February 9th, public hearing. March 9th would be when the new rate plan would be adopted, canceled, goes up by adopting the resolutions. And then April 1st is when those rate structure changes become effective. And early June is when the customers will see their new, their first bill under the new structure. If you notice here with the schedule of rate increases, they don't begin until 2022. So the intent is to do the rate structure changes for a year, get everyone used to that. And then, um, you know, there'll be some adjustments there and then start the increases after that point. Uh, and then this, this was from, for the House, but I thought it would be helpful here as well. How can you impact your bill? Everyone knows, or most people are aware that their, their water usage impacts their bill. Winter water usage will impact both your water and sewer bills now. And seasonal water impact, water usage impacts your summer water bills. But in a less direct, but still very applicable way, you can impact your bill through our system costs and wastewater especially. So we've had some significant issues with flushables and fog in one of our list, a couple of our lift stations. So flushables are all those things that are labeled as you can flush them down your toilet, but they're not toilet paper. Really toilet paper is the only thing you should ever flush down your toilet. All of the other things, the wipes, everything, they, that you may pass through your pipes or they may not. But when they get into the system, they clog up our pumps, they cause wear and tear. They, we've had to have our operators out multiple times to clean out one of our lift stations. It's been clogged in the last couple of months where we've never had issues like this before. So that adds to the cost of, of operating the system and it ultimately is reflected in, um, in rate. Fog is fats, oils and greases, and it's the same idea. You don't want to put any of that down your drain. That even if it passes through your pipes in your home, it's going to solidify somewhere else in the system and it causes the same issues and increased costs to maintain the system. So that's just a little plug at the end there to, to, for people to be aware of what they're doing and how they can help influence their overall system costs. That was it for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor, you can.
I, yeah, that's second or third time we've gone through this full, full boat. So thank you very much for doing that. We continue on with the public testimony, starting first with seeking those folks who'd like to speak via the computer. And if you are on your screen and you click participants at the bottom, you'll get a screen showing all the participants and you'll see a raise hand function in the lower left. Just click on that and we'll see that you want to speak. And I encourage you to do that, ideally around three minutes or so. Once we go through those on the computer, then we'll seek anybody who might be on the phone. I don't think we have anybody on the phone. So I'm open enough with public comment. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. If you can't figure out how to do that, turn your microphone and talk to us. Okay, can't do it, anybody on phone?
I don't notice anybody, no.
Okay. Okay. Boy, once. Twice. Counsel, do you have any questions with staff or anybody else at this point before we move on?
Callan, uh, mayor, I, I just wanted to ask a few questions. Pretty much have asked this every time we've talked about it, but, um, uh, have we had any, um, well, I guess to address the, you said, Janelle, that about a 2.5, $2.53 per month increase average across the board.
That was actually a decrease, I believe.
A decrease, so that's for water. That was my first question, but we, but in there you said 2% of our users would potentially have a 20% increase in water. Is that, is that a number accurate?
So you heard me say that about 2%. This isn't just water, this is the combined bills. So I want to clarify that. So on this previous slide, um, what you were asking about, the total water and sewer utility bill for a residential home with average water use will decrease by about $2.53 per month. And I don't know if anyone actually uses the exact average, but that's, that's what the numbers are telling us. The, um, yeah, about 2% of customers will increase more than 20%. And I would say, I mean, that's, and Deb jumped in here, but this is, we're out at this end of the spectrum here. Are you able to see right now?
Yeah, you're, you're way out there.
Yeah, and, and one thing is, you know, when we were doing this, we did have some issues with some data and that's why this is, one of the reasons this has taken as long as it has. And we did try to vet everything, but there could still be an outlier in here that got through as far as the, um, a reading that was off or something that didn't get, didn't get addressed. So it doesn't change the overall picture of the revenue and what we set the rates at, but there may, may or may not actually be somebody out here who would be using it.
Okay, I was just wondering if we've, and I, and I, I guess I, I believe I've heard you say that we've reached out to some of these heavy users that potentially could see an increase. Is that accurate?
We, we have reached out to some of the commercial industrial where the biggest changes are happening.
Right.
We have not specifically reached out to residence, to, yeah, for residential.
This is sort of the process is by having these hearings and publicly announcing it, right? Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to check on that. And then just, I did have one about, it was low, we got a 33% increase in sewer over the next five years. Understandable, we haven't had the, you know, uh, increases, but then, then you mentioned the flushables and the fog. And that is sort of new. I mean, we've had, we've been talking about this and I've seen, you know, in last council meetings and such. But it sounds like, yeah, are we? I mean, it sounds like maybe this is really becoming a problem if we're out unplugging our pipes and, and our pumps. Is this something that we're going to try to maybe do a, a larger campaign of educating on?
This, this is a problem not just for Millersburg. It's a problem throughout, and Deb can probably speak to this even more, um, I don't, throughout the country, probably. Well.
There's a lot of it, some of it.
There is some, some idea that COVID is contributing to the fog issues of people, more people being home, more people looking at home, doing things at home and washing that grease down the drain. That is when we started seeing more of the fog issues was this past summer spring. Flushables were, the main areas are where we've had newer development. It might just be that there are more people now contributing to those areas. The, there's actually a bill in the, that's going to the legislature about the, the labeling or packaging of these products. And, uh, you know, we're, there are much larger wastewater agencies than us in the area who are pushing this. But, I mean, we, we support it as well, that, you know, most people just don't know that when something says flushable and they buy it at the store, they think, I can put it down, I can flush it down the toilet. And that marketing has been really detrimental to the wastewater industry. Deb, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you're right on, yeah.
I think another thing we're seeing is you'll see like Clorox and some of the wipes, they may state on them that they are septic safe. So you see people trying to flush them and, you know, with the, with the number of Clorox wipes and other type of wipes being used, there's contributing some to it as well.
No, the wipes are really fibrous and that's, that's, I think, why they get a lot of the attention because they clog up pumps and, and other things in the system. But as far as the campaign outreach, yes, um, we have Albany stuff on their website. And because we are a part of their, we contract with them, should say. Those resources are available to us too. And we've tried to push that out on our website and through some communications. And we will continue to do that, um, to make people aware of these things. And we have posted information on our website about these things. Albany has a grease lid and scraper program that anyone can request. It's, it's more of an awareness thing, but, um, and Millersburg residents are, are able to request that as well. So anything we can do to get the word out, uh, we will try, but it's, it's hard to get people's attention sometimes on these items.
Well, yeah. No, it all sounds good. I, I just, those are the things that jumped out at me and, yeah, thanks for the presentation. I've definitely, we've heard a lot and I believe, I feel like we've done everything we can at this time to reach out to our community members, residential ones on that. So anyways, thank you.
Counselor, I would just point out that also, in addition, probably the last month and a half, almost two months now with, when the mailers went out to all of our residents, it's also been on our website. You have the calculator for them to go in and calculate. So they can take their bills to calculate and see how these will impact them.
Nice.
So that's.
Yeah, did, did we get much feedback on that? I remember us talking about that, so that's pretty cool that we were able to do that.
I think the only one that had, you know, had a question from maybe was a commercial user.
I think I took that slide out of here because it, we weren't going to pull it up and, and go through them this time. But yeah, that's, that's been out there for a while. I don't know how many people have utilized it, but, um, we did say for commercial industrial, contact us because we can't put, that's not as easy to create a calculator for and put out there. So we've done that for, for one.
And it, and that still lives on the website, so.
Nice, well, thank you.
Scott, any other comments or questions from council? One last call for the public. I would like to thank Deb in a big way. Do you remember, Deb, do you remember when you started this project?
A few months, oh, a couple of years.
Couple of years, you know, and I remember the first set of slides you showed me with, which rolled up into multiple years of seven and a half percent increases in sewer, this shocked the heck out of me. And it scared me, it actually scared me quite frankly. But what's really awesome about this whole process, each of these slides are backed by a lot of data. I mean, you've been collecting data for a long time and manipulating and, and trying to understand our costs and trying to project our future costs based upon all the factors that come into play here. And, and I, I feel really good about supporting a process and the decision maker process that's supported by all the data. And, and that's really, really solid. There was a statement made a few months ago about how things won't improve till we get a council that is fiscally responsible. I don't know how you get more fiscally responsible than this. But you go in and collect the data that you have collected and, and created the, you know, the future window of our future with water and sewer and come out the way you did. It's just totally awesome. I really appreciate what you've done and Janelle, thank you so much yourself for, for helping lead this process. That said, any other comment from anybody? If not, then I'm going to close the hearing. So it's now closed. And I'd like to thank again Deb and Janelle, especially, and anybody else who, I know Kevin, you did too, part of the team, as you would always say, but just nicely done and it was great work. Okay, moving on now to council and staff comments.
Mayor.
Yes.
Could I ask real quick, would the, uh, would you and the council be willing to consider moving item eight up? That's involving an amendment to Deb's contract for our parks SDC, so she doesn't have to stay on.
Certainly. So with that in mind, counsel, let's move to new business item A, Lordy Rothstein Group Contract Amendment. So Kevin, I assume you're going to need that discussion or is it out?
Uh, Janelle, Kim.
Okay.
Go quick, we just lost Counselor Sullivan because he lost his internet connection. So you want to, I was just kind of texting me, could call in?
We will pause, if you don't mind, we'll pause here for a second.
Okay.
Okay, hopefully he'll be able to call in. Okay, so as we just talked about, back in May of 18, we entered into an agreement with McGlory, we're asking for Deb for a rate and SDC study. So at that time, the city had not completed the Parks Master Plan. And so we did not include development of park SDCs in the original agreement. Now with the complete, completion of the Parks Master Plan, we're requesting an amendment to the contract to include the parks in the SDC study, which the previous SDC work is finished. So this will be basically a new SDC process for parks alone for $13,700. And Deb's here, so if you have any questions, she can help answer them. But that's, uh, that's really what we're asking. If you want to still move ahead with doing the parks SDC study and what we anticipate being a change to our SDC amount coming out of this.
We have an estimated timeframe for completion of this work?
Part of it will probably vary because one of the questions that we will need to ask, the council will need to make a decision on fairly early is if you want to change and include industrial and commercial properties in it, and then if so. So I would imagine depending on which direction that you go and Deb, I can, and Janelle can assess that. But that is one of the things that we'll need to, a discussion on fairly early.
But that's a question we, we process upon the process, but the, both of works, data collection and data collection, right? And understanding the raw, the, the world around, how you apply the dollars and so forth. I just, I forget the background or the details around this, but it's a fair amount of busy work to get to that point.
So can you comment on the timeline?
Sure, yeah. I, and the technical work and whatever kind of engagement, you know, we'll do, it generally takes a couple of months. That's assuming, you know, we can get the data, uh, pretty quickly and all. Then, as you may recall, there's kind of a long lag between when we complete the study and when the council can actually, uh, have a public hearing on it based on the Oregon revised statutes that, um, regulate, uh, the procedural issues with respect to the SDCs. So, you know, there's a 60 day wait, uh, after we complete that before the action can occur. So usually it ends up taking, you know, four months or so before you can actually do something once we go. But that, that doesn't mean, I, you know, I expect that we would see you, uh, before that to talk about some of the policy issues like Janelle said about whether you want to assess the fee. to talk about some of the policy issues like Janelle said about whether you want to assess the fee only on residential or to both residential and non-residential.
And I think considering timing, that's a very important question because I think, you know, a year from now roughly, my guess, the bulk of the housing developments are going to be behind us other than the small lots additions. The housing developments, they're saying will be well on the way or near completion, meaning that won't be that many SDC dollars coming to us unless we look at industrial, commercial. Is that a fair assessment?
I guess not.
That is likely. We will prob, you know, even if we get to a point where we need to see an expansion of our UBG, it's going to take a while before you would see, see that. So there will probably, we'll probably see a lag. You know, we do have other property that potentially could come in. You know, it really just depends on if the owners of those change their mind. But, you know, based on what we're hearing right now, we likely will see a lag for, for probably three to five years at least.
Exactly. And, and where that's taken me and they're getting off track just a little bit here, but we're about to get into our budget process. We may need to bring funds in from elsewhere to really get our parks, the new park especially, where we want it for the next three to five years and not work, not rely a whole heck lot on SDC funding. Anyway, that's, a lot, this is not on target, so.
I would say with the couple of developments that we have approved and submitted plans on, doing this now will still be some benefit because SDCs are assessed at the time the building permits are issued. So we're still a little ways out from some of those building permits being issued. So there'll be some, some benefit.
Okay, so Deb, please hurry.
Will do, Mayor. You got it.
Motion, Council? Can I get a motion then? Or no action necessary? Uh, wait a minute. Yeah. There's a motion, there's a just a motion, motion is bottom of your screen, but somebody consider that.
All right, this is Scott up, go ahead and move for approval of the Parks SDC Study Proposal for Gilardi-Rothstein Group and authorize, authorize the city manager to enter into a contract amendment with Gilardi-Rothstein Group for said services.
Second?
Second.
That was Scott McPhee, I, I got him. That was.
All right, very good. The two Scots, okay. Any further discussion? If not, please go ahead and vote.
Mayor, for the record, we may want to just confirm. I believe that Councilor Harms and Sullivan came in at the same time for the second. I don't believe Councilor Mc, he confirmed that.
Really? Is, did I get that wrong?
No, I had, I had Councilor Sullivan be by a second.
Ah, so I, I got the McPhee and, and Harms messed up. My apologies, Councilor Harms.
That was all time. Thanks, Deb.
You used to.
Appreciate that. Motion passed, by the way. Yeah, you know, so. All right.
Guys are all jumping in it really fast. Need to slow down. I'm just kidding.
You got to learn to listen faster. Okay. Moving back, we, back to council staff comments? Anything? Okay, moving on to the city manager report.
Janelle, start off with our monthly report, a project report.
Okay. So the first project we have to talk about is the fire station. As you may be aware, it was advertised for bid last week. The bids are due on March 9th. We have to date received five prime contractors who are interested and wanted to be on our bidders list. And we, I didn't put it on here, but we have mandatory pre-bid meeting on the 23rd and then an optional site visit on the 24th. So at that mandatory pre-bid meeting, we will have the list of all contractors who are going to be able to bid on the project because they have to be at that meeting. Then staff will review the bids and actually a panel of us will, including those who've been involved with the design, review the bids and provide a recommendation to award at a special council meeting on March 15th, 2021. So if you may recall, we were, we were hoping to hit the actual, the regular council meeting dates, but just due to needing to, a little bit more time to get a complete design out for bid, we had to push it back a week. Notice to proceed could be issued as early as April 6th. It's unlikely we'll actually issue it on the 6th, but early April is, is the timeframe we're looking at. So the award procedure, I wanted to talk about this for just a minute because next week we are going to have a public hearing on this. So it's, it's been determined that award of the contract should consider contractor qualifications and experience in addition to price to ensure the best value is provided to the city. So you may recall, early in this process, we considered alternate contracting methods like design build or CMGC, which is Instruction Manager General Contractor. Those are usually used on a little bit more complex projects. And we determined that that probably wasn't going to be the best value for Millersburg on this project. But we do want to consider contractor qualifications and not just awards of the low bidder. So state statute requires competitive bidding or award of the low bidder unless there's an exemption. And you, the city council, as the local contract review board, may exempt a public improvement contract from the competitive bidding requirements if you approve findings in accordance with the ORS procedures. So that's what we're going to be doing next week. The public hearings been scheduled. We drafted the findings, they're posted on our website for viewing. We met all the requirements in statute. And the reason for this is not to try to not go with low bid. It's to make sure that we don't, we have qualified contractors that we're, so I don't want to, to make it sound like we're not considering the price. That's still very, very important. We just didn't want to be backed into a corner of feeling like we had to choose the low bidder if they weren't qualified. And that was it on the fire station. Are there any questions on that? Then I'll move on. Couple upcoming projects. As you recall, we did a temporary pavement repair in Catherine a little while ago. And the permanent repair has been sent out to contractors for quotes. We'll, quotes are due in a couple of days. At, but at least we've gotten one. I know a couple of other contractors are working on it because they've asked me questions. So we'll plan to get that done by the end of April. We, it's already budgeted and at least the first quote we got is within our budget. So we don't see any issues there, including even if you add in the temporary repair costs that we already paid. And then the City Hall Parking Lot Repair Project will be sent out for quotes in the same procedure a little bit later this month. And we also plan to get that constructed in the spring and it is budgeted. We have, I think you're probably aware, new utility billing and online payment system. And I will, do you want to talk about it, Kevin, or let Kim?
Let Kim, we'll let Kim give you an update on where we're at.
We are currently working through the final stage for billing and working with Express Bill Pay. And as all software, people who have ever gone through software transitions and updates, there's always some hiccups. So we're in one now, which is why bills haven't gone out yet. So if anybody mentions that to you, we're working really hard with Casell to get the billing done. But we're running into a few snags, nothing to do with our new billing system. It's just, the one today is with Assist, so. But otherwise, things are going well. The new system is great. We just found out today that Express Bill Pay for, which is the online payment portal that we know residents will really love because they will be able to see their consumption. They will be able to do online payments, automatic payments. They will be able to sign up for paperless billing. There's just an awful lot of options that this will give our residents to not only see their water and sewer accounts, but to manage them better. And these are all the things that people have really asked for. So I just found out that what that's going to launch sooner than we thought. So when we get the bills done and out, you guys, everybody will be getting information about this. And, and everything's on the website. So things are going well. It's just a few hiccups to be expected.
The billing? Any questions on the billing? So I will say, as everyone's aware, it's been quite the challenge, primarily with the problems we had with our old system and doing it. But I will say Assist, we will be very glad to be off that program. And I think Casell has been very responsive in assisting us with things that we've run into and things. And it's night and day from what I'm seeing and hearing with Casell versus what we had seen in the past from Assist.
Yes, their support, yeah. Their support hands down blows Assist out of the water. In fact, I had actually, I showed the guy from Casell today how I actually have to request help. And he is flabbergasted by the fact that it will take probably almost a full day before I get response, whereas they give us response right away. So it's, it's going to be nice once we get through that.
Right, couple of other items. We were contacted earlier, this year actually, just before Christmas, by the city's family for, of our first mayor of the city of Millersburg, Mary Clayes. And she, Mary celebrates her 80th birthday this month. In fact, I'm thinking, I think it's this weekend. I think it's this weekend. They would, they want to know if they could do a bench in the park to recognize her. Actually, I think it was the 6th, I think. So I think it's past, I think it was last week. So we've had some discussion with them and we really don't have a standard for benches and things. So Janelle and I took a look at some, some benches and we came to a conclusion on a bench that we like. And I think Janelle's got a photo of an example of it right here. So what they were wanting to know is if they could do a bench and have it engraved, recognizing her. She's still alive. In fact, she was at the park. She lives, I believe, in Sublimity or Silverton area. But she was down earlier this spring, this fall with the grandkids in the park. And they would like to put a bench recognizing her 80th birthday and her time as mayor. So we've talked with them. They are willing to purchase the bench, but I wanted to have some discussion with council and see what your thought is. The cost of the bench with shipping and stuff were probably a little over, around $950. The bench itself is about $890. It's out of the Northwest, so probably, one of the family members is a contractor. They're willing to do the pad and stuff. They're willing to do all of it, but I thought I would just pass on and see what council's thought were as if there's any interest in the city maybe purchasing the bench. And then seeing if they would want to put pad in for it to sit on and pay for the engraving of the bench. But the family's also willing to cover all of it. But I just thought this might be a nice way for us to recognize her time and the fact that she was, in fact, the first mayor. So actually, if you're not aware, looking at the history, she was the mayor, I think, for the first year and then her in one or two years. And her and Clayton switched roles. She went on the planning commission and Clayton came on to council. And council became, and then Clayton became mayor after that. So just wanted to see what your, your thoughts were on that. They didn't ask us that, but I just thought, given prominence that she was, in fact, the city's first mayor, they would like to have this place over by the playground. So that's where we're looking at placing it. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, this, this is Karen. I, I'm glad you clarified that this was our first mayor. Because yeah, I did not know, I didn't know that. So that's, that's good to know, good information. It's actually ironic sort of something that I was going to bring up just next time I met up with you, Kevin, but I'll talk openly about it a little bit because it's sort of on the same topic. There's about dedicating or type, you know, in this case, maybe a bench. There's a few other things in the park that I've noticed that are there with, in memory or in dedication. And I don't know, I don't know the history on that myself, not, you know, obviously I've, I've been on the council for, you know, a number of years, but I, I don't know the history. And I'm wondering if that is captured somewhere in the archives at, at City Hall. I'd be curious. It was a thing that, a little project that I was thinking of doing once I eventually retire. But to look at some of the history and what, what some of those things are, the box I've seen. And I'll just bring it, tension, there's actually, there's a plaque that I found at the State and Jordan Bridge that was, it is actually a, a brick and it was a significant brick right in front of the bridge there that said Millersburg. And, and it clearly was, you know, the, it was, it's, it was by itself recognizing Millersburg. So I guess with the long story short is that it'd be good to do, start capturing these and have some history if it's not there. I'm guessing that one clearly was probably in the minutes somewhere in the past. I think it was in 97, might have, that might have came out. But there, I know there's a couple of other plaques in the, in the park that I'm not sure of. But with this one, in this topic, I, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity to recognize our first mayor. So I, I support that and would be interested in hearing from the other counselors.
Kevin, do you want to, this is kind of a nice tie to what Scott just brought up with what you're already doing, Kevin, that you haven't talked about yet. And that is really documenting the history of the city. And this is a link that most of us don't know about. I, I spoke with Kevin, I'm sorry, Clayton, after he left the council. I talked a bit about their history and he talked about this specific thing, how they traded places two years into coming to city. History that we don't really know a whole lot about. And to get maybe, if we actually talked to her a little bit and gleaned some stuff from her to go along with the work that you're already doing, might also mention that, and Profin actually suggested we do this as well because he wanted to make sure we got our history documented. He was willing to contribute. I know you're talking to Sharon and others. So it's really a neat project to take on. I think I've heard Scott volunteer to help you. So anyway, this ties you with the whole thing. I, I support doing, I support the city paying for it. You know, given what we did, you know, the plaque for Clayton, which obviously he spent 40 years as mayor and was prepared to hurt too, but she is still an important part of history, given that we've become a brand new city out of nothing and she was there as mayor to get us over the first couple of years. I think it's pretty significant, even though I don't know her at all or nothing about her. It'd be good to collect that information and, and recognize her and actually pay for the benches as well in that recognition. That's my two.
And one of the things the family has, has mentioned is when they are doing the, once they unveil it, they would like to do it later this spring. They want to do it on some nicer weather. They would like to invite a council there as well, so, and, and staff if we're, for those are available. So that would be something as well. I, I support it as well. She was a super nice lady. Had a great, great family.
Awesome. Scott, Karen, Dave? I mean, Scott McPhee, Dave. I'm sorry, I bet you're the Scott, Scott McPhee and Dave.
I'm, I'm good with it as well. Did, you did say she's still living though, right?
Yes, she is, she's still living.
Okay. She's a little bit older than me. Okay.
She just turned eight.
So we will, with, with that concurrence, then we will let the family know that the city will purchase the bench. We'll ask them if, if they were willing to still contribute. Because I think they really want to contribute something as well. So we'll ask them to contribute for the engraving of the bench and to help with the pad if that sounds appropriate to you. I know they'll be thrilled. I mean, like I said, they wanted to, they were more than willing to pay for the whole, cover the whole cost of it. So I think it'd be, I think it's the right thing to do as a city.
Mayor, it's Forrest. Kevin, I just assumed though that you or somebody will approve what the engraving is going to be on there before they.
Yes. And we've already talked with them about it, yes, but it will be.
It's just like an apple to show you what the type of engraving looks like. We'll not do those words.
And we've talked about it and we'll be the one ordering it. They were looking at something along the line in honor of Mary Millersburg's first mayor on her eightieth birthday with her name. So.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, are these cast iron legs with fiberglass?
No, it's all composite.
All composite, okay.
And it will be anchored as well. Yeah. This picture doesn't show that, but there is anchoring.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And we were kind of looking at this would kind of be that that bench would be the standard for when we put additional benches, if we have additional benches and stuff in. It meets ADA requirements and other things. So. The other thing I just wanted to mention, there will be a blood drive here at City Hall, March nineteenth from nine thirty to three with Red Cross. Red Cross will be sponsoring it. It will be in the council chambers. They'll be the one. It's by appointment only. So if you know people want to pass it, we'll get information on our website and later, as we get closer, put it on the reader board. But that will be done. And I know that's something that's really important right now with COVID, with them getting blood donations is difficult at times. And so it won't, won't be any walk-ins allowed. It'll have to all be by appointment. And then Red Cross makes sure all of the appropriate social distancing things and requirements are met. So.
Anything else?
That's it on that report.
You know, other reports?
That was it.
Okay, but I have a question for you then. And I failed to ask you earlier. When we purchased the webpage package, we added after a very lengthy discussion, the module regarding, or enabling us to collect contact information for businesses. Where, what's the schedule for getting that going? Or I have no idea where we are on it.
So there's actually a couple of things that we have. We have that. And we also have the ability for residents to register so that we can push information to them on things that they want. And we also have our, have microsites. So we're still dealing with the the basic operation, trying to get all of that up and operating. And then those will be coming on. We'll be adding those on as soon as we get, we're still trying to get everything on the main site that we need and get it operating and and that. So my hope is within the next three to four months. We can have those things up. But Kim, have you heard anything further from them on that?
Well, I just found out today by getting an email message from the guy that I work with that he's had an unexpected emergency, serious emergency in his family. So he sent me off to another guy. So I will try, I'm going to get ahold of him and see if I can kick this along. Part of the thing I wanted to do was have the business part kicked off by having Astrid do some of the entries with the information that we know for sure. And then encourage the businesses to go in and do that. So we can add them, they can add them, but at least start getting that going.
I was hoping, thank you. I was hoping we've developed a letter to all our businesses explaining the opportunity, why we're providing the opportunity and some kind of process where they can do that. I'm sure that's where you're going with it.
I'll be honest, Mayor, we, that's a great idea. And I think we've been so focused on the Cassell implementation that and the mate, them getting the regular stuff up that we do need to, we do need to work with that.
The reason I'm bringing it up, this, the reason I'm bringing it up is it's a ticket, it's it's an item for discussion Thursday when we review the regional fourth county economic development strategy for final approval, which is I guess after twenty years, this is a five year update after twenty years. There's not much of this that really pertains to Millersburg, but I'm I'm involved in that process. And one of the topics in the in the name of resiliency, which is now a big deal because of the fires and COVID and everything else, is the realization that people have no means of talking to their businesses. As you've probably read in the news, Albany, I think, took off in her own direction, trying to create a process, trying to go down the business license approach to get that data, which didn't go well. But there's a realization out there across the four county region that people don't have in their after discretion, a means to talk to all of the businesses. The best examples out are of the chambers of commerce. I want to be able to say, we have a plan. We have the module within our webpage to do this and we're going to be proceeding. But I will resist like crazy trying to create a regional contact list, which is where they were initially born with it. You don't need to worry about any of that. But in the role that I play there, it's a topic for discussion. And I I think we're already ahead of most people just by saying we're going to do it this way. And I hope we are successful making that happen. They get so important. You know, Kevin, you were communicating with Janelle with businesses during the initial COVID stages. Trying to at least, and this would have been a handy tool to have to do it more accurately. So anyway, that said.
Our intent is to do that. It's just, we have just, we've just had, I mean, with the station and everything else, trying to get everything up and operating, the website and the sale and things, we have just been, we've been swamped. So it's.
I actually, I actually know that and I appreciate that. And I have no, I, please don't take this as me wanting to push you any faster. Okay, I just want to know where you're at.
Yeah, well, and our goal is, it is an important one to to get done. So and along with trying to get the economic development and also our microsite for the celebration as well. So.
Yeah, yeah, fine. No, I, please, please don't take this as me trying to push you harder. I was just wanting to know what your thoughts was. So.
Great.
Thank you. Anything else on from on staff report projects? If not, Forrest, do you have any, Forrest?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business, there is an enlisted new, new business, the OMI DRC contract.
So is, let, so this is a contract that we have for our direct reporting. So this is something that we have to do, even though we have our water operations with the city of Albany, we still have to have someone else outside of the city overseeing our system for us.
Well, we, we, we have to have someone who's in the role as DRC, which is direct responsible control. And Albany has let us know that they're not comfortable serving in that role for our system because they don't control everything we do in our system.
So with that, since we don't have anyone on staff that meets the requirements for that, we have since two thousand seventeen contracted that service with OMI, which is a division of CH two M Hill. Previously, that was handled through a contract they had with Lebanon. That contract has ended. So they are moving us to a contract they have with the city of Dallas. Still the same individual will be our, our DRC. The cost really hasn't increased any greater than what we've seen. So this would be for our fourth amendment to that contract of two thousand seventeen. And it results in a new monthly cost of six hundred eighty four dollars roughly compared to our current six sixty six, which is two point seven five percent increase, which is pretty close to what we've seen in the past with that. So I'd be request a motion to approve this and enter into the contract with that. And again, this is also amending and removing the language of the agreement with Lebanon and referencing the agreement with Dallas.
And Kevin, I might suggest that on the motion, I think we need to add some additional language. It would say, I move for approval of amendment for an authorization. So where it says I move for approval of, we should need to put in of amendment for, of amendment for an authorization, which is a manager signing. See that?
Yeah, sorry. So we say approval of and authorization for the city manager to sign.
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to indicate for sure that they're approving amendment for and then authorizing the city manager to sign amendment for.
The council may have questions as well, but the reason this is married up with another city is because the economics of scale that we have, trying to make enough work for one guy to do all this so we can
Essentially, if they did not have this service with another city nearby, we'd have to look for someone else to serve as our DRC. So that's why it's referenced. And in the contract, it talks about if they lose that, it talks about the same with Lebanon and with Dallas, the same language is in there. If they lose it, they have the ability to to sever the agreement.
And there's some notice periods in there. So they, I don't think this was a surprise to anyone. The Lebanon was going to come to an end at this point. So they they looked for ways to make it continue to work for us and were able to do it through their contract with Dallas. So it doesn't change the service that we're getting.
You might have mentioned this already and I didn't hear you, but two questions. Can, does this have to be a third party or can we learn and get certified to do it ourselves?
We could do it ourselves. It would have to be Janelle, most likely, with the requirements.
You have to get a certification. And our, because of the type of system we are, it's the lowest level of certification. I looked into it a little bit. I can't say that I fully know what I would have to do, but it's it's going through some training and testing. What was not clear was, you know, it's a very clear path for someone who doesn't have, who's not already in industry, but for someone who's already an engineer, what, what do you have to do on top of that? There was, there was some uncertainty on part of the person from the state I was talking to. And it's not a big thing. But it's it's a question of where do you want me to be spending my time?
No, this is, yeah, thank you for saying that. This is definitely the right moment. But it sounds like we have to prepare for having to do it some other way down the road.
Well, I, yeah, I, I think if something were to happen or we needed to go down the road, we'd probably first look and see if there's other options for us to contract maybe with some other agency. And the only reason Albany doesn't want to do it is because of potential conflict with them not having it. So there is some, some, you know, that's why you have someone else. And we do have, there is a document that they maintain also as far as outlining what we, you know, procedures and stuff that we have to go through.
Right, they're in charge of our sampling requirements, making sure we're meeting all of our our state requirements there. And then it's responding to emergencies and and they, this person doesn't respond to the emergencies, but they have to do notifications and things like that. So we don't need that service very much. Most just keep him in the loop. But.
Okay. Any, thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Anybody? Didn't mean to hog the questions. If not, can I get a motion? Please?
I'll move for approval of amendment of amendment for and authorization for the city manager to sign amendment for to the professional services agreement with OMI.
Okay.
Okay, Scott, Karen and Scott McPhee.
I did. I wanted to confirm that was Scott McPhee, since apparently I can't tell those two apart.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, please go ahead and vote. Okay, it's passion absolutely. Thank you. Moving on now to CH two M Hill Jacobs contract amendment.
That'll be Janelle.
All right. So our professional services contract for on-call engineering services currently has an end date of June thirtieth. So this is our, we've had this contract for quite a while. We've been renewing it or mending it often on as needed over time. So we currently have a not to exceed contract amount of a hundred thousand dollars for this fiscal year. And to date, we've spent about eighty four thousand of that. And the largest portion that was spent on oversight of the Woods Road project in this past summer and fall, but also with other specific projects that have been going on. The plan, what I had intended was to really not utilize them much the rest of this year. And I thought we would come in under our hundred thousand. But we've had a couple of things come up. So in order to continue to support ongoing projects, including the sewer lift station, emergency repairs and the city property development, those are the big things that we need their help with. Requesting the contract amendment to increase that not to exceed amount by forty thousand dollars. Doesn't mean we'll spend it all, but we want to have the ability to react quickly as needed with with these two main things going on. And so we're asking for you to increase that contract amount so we have that flexibility and that technical resource available to us.
And Janelle.
I think, well, I think what Forrest was going to say is we probably need to add amendment twelve in here after a move for approval of, like we did on the last one.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed that. I reviewed the afternoon.
For those of you who may not be aware, Scott Cowan, I'll be for sure, this one single light item is paying for Janelle's salary. Literally, literally, this number used to be up around four hundred thousand dollars on an ongoing basis. But you know, here, we're down to around a hundred thousand, the same amount of work's getting done. Anyway, thanks, Janelle. I'll ask some questions from staff or council, I'm sorry. All right, motion please.
Oh, do it again. I move for approval amendment of amendment twelve and authorization for the city manager to sign amendment twelve to to the CH two M Hill incorporation contract for professional services.
Okay.
The same to Scott, Kim.
I got him that time.
Okay, if you have more questions, please go ahead and vote. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on now to health insurance.
All right, this is just information only. Wanted to let you know, we, our health insurance plan is due for renewal on April first. And we have received from our insurance broker, Aldrich Advisors, the changes to our plans. So currently, we have two plans that employees are on, an HSA, which is the current family plan. For one, it's a family that's on it. The current rate is fifteen twenty seven sixty. It's reducing three point nine percent to fourteen sixty eight. And then a non-HSA plan, which is, we're currently paying fifty eight nineteen for total. That's where the majority of our employees are on that plan. That's, it's going to fifty eight thirty four per month, a point three percent increase. So there are some changes in the plans with, in both plans that increase the out of pocket cost, which has minimized the rates. And there's also some changes to the prescription policies and things as well that I outlined a little bit more in the in the memo for you. We budgeted, our budget estimate this year for that increase was a two point oh three percent. So you can see we're significantly under that. So we have sufficient funds in the budget. And then we'll look at next year's budget during the budget process for until increases for next fiscal year. But essentially, we will be at this for the majority of next fiscal year with April through June, depending on changes we see in the plan. But I would say, based on what we're seeing, we're in a pretty good group. So we're not a group by ourselves. We're in part of a group that we have received through Aldrich. And this is on, still on the Blue Cross program. So any questions regarding that?
Good. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Now go to the third item, Kevin.
All right. So over the last probably several years, couple of years, this conversation actually started probably two years ago in the middle of the street. So I joke, we joke about it. So the YMCA's current CEO, Chris Reese, actually lives across the street from me. That's why I joke about conversations in the middle of the street. We, we talk a lot out in the middle of the street of all the world's problems. But over the last several years, YMCA's actually expressed interest in looking at potentially doing a facility out here. And Chris contacted us earlier last month about the potential of a grant that they wanted to look at potentially going for, for a new facility here in Millersburg. So we had an initial meeting with them, virtual meeting with them and discussed it. They shared with us, they're looking at wanting to do, go for a grant for construction this March, potentially for the grant, not for construction, but throughout this March for potentially a grant to fund a fifteen to twenty thousand square foot facility. Wanted to know if the city would be willing to partner with them in that, for that. So we talked about possible locations, which we had talked with council previously about when we had discussions with the school district on that. So we looked at those. We've talked about some of the sites here surrounding City Hall. We also We also looked at the location across the street where the current fire station is. So in talking with, Chris has also had discussions with, with John Anderson, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club. And they're actually working very collaboratively so that, because they both have programs that, that meet community needs. So the Boys and Girls Club, of course, is, deals with youth sports where the Y picks up those before they get into youth sports and those that after they leave youth sports. So really between the Y and the Boys and Girls Club, they're addressing recreation needs from essentially, you know, birth through seniors on it. So they're proposing to look at potentially a facility that would be operated by the, by the YMCA, but would also include programs ran by the Y, by the Boys and Girls Clubs, such as after-school and their sporting facilities in there. So looking at about 20,000 square foot complex, early learning center, possibly always also using the current facility. So when we looked at it, looking at where we want to do, based on what they're wanting to put in, exercise fitness facilities, we really felt, everyone felt that probably the best location would be across the street at the current fire station location. For a couple of reasons. With an after-school program, if we located someplace on the site north of the city hall, one of the problems they have is access coming off Old Salem potentially and Concert Road. If they come in and have an after-school program, wanting to have ability for buses to come in with the infrastructure where I have put in for the fire station, it's really a, a good place. That site and maybe a little additional would easily incorporate, be able to incorporate a 20,000 square foot building there on it. And that's what they would like to start with, with the possibility of expansion for it. So Chris is very excited about it. He's brought recent associates on already to start looking at some site layouts potentially. Had some discussions with a, a major builder in the region to kind of get some ideas on that. So if there's interest from the city, what they wanted to know is if the city is willing to partner with them, with the, both the YMCA and Boys and Girls Clubs to allow this program to move forward. So if we are, would the city be willing to provide essentially the property through a long-term lease for that? So that is the question that we would like to ask is if the council is willing to consider the proposal partnering with YMCA staff, we would ask that you would make a motion to direct the city manager to continue working with the YMCA leadership to support development of project and draft potential lease language for council consideration if project funding could be secured. So that's kind of a quick overview of it. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Chris is, what they were looking at is timing wise is probably they would be looking at breaking ground maybe in about a year and a half, which would probably fit well if we award the station, because that'd be about the time that we would be moving from that facility to the fire station. We're also potentially interested in the temporary station if arrangements can be made to allow its continued use, either for childcare or other function, either permanent or at least entail such time as the new facility is constructed. So that's a quick overview of what we're looking at.
Any other questions from council?
Can I get a, just count, my question would be if we move forward, looks like just giving them a nod to continue to have conversations and, you know, it looks like draft up some language that we could be looking at. Would we be on the hook if, I mean, I guess when would we be on the hook to commit to this, through this process?
My recommendation is we wouldn't be on the hook until they've secured funding. But I think one of the things that would be, would assist in their ability to secure funding is knowing that they have a willing partner that's willing to provide the, the property to them.
Okay. So a willing partner, not committing, yeah, but just a willing partner.
Evan, do you know when they will find if they get funding?
Well, I think they're looking at potentially, one of the grants they're looking at going for is this March.
So I guess my, my concern is that, so if, if we give them thumbs up that we're willing to partner with them and to provide them land, they are saying that they want to know that prior to going out in March. Is that right? Prior to, so in the next six weeks, they want to know that we're committed to them. Is that what they're asking for?
Well, I think what we're saying Forrest is that we would make a commitment to work with them on forming, looking at lease language if the project can be funded. I don't know that anything would have to be done before they secure the funding.
Okay, okay. So we, we would commit to working on it, you know, and here's where I come into, I, I don't want us to commit to something that we don't know the terms of, but I can certainly, I'm certainly supportive of committing to working towards to see if we can get an agreement.
Well, most likely Forrest, what I think we would be, what they would be looking for and that, and so council is aware, they're probably looking at a long-term 50-year lease, basically renewable, at a low cost such as a dollar a year for the lease.
Okay.
Something along those, those terms. And we had had discussion previously with both them and the school district of similar things a couple of years ago.
Okay. Let me pick, let me pick up on that point and I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to say too much. I'm not sure what belongs to executive session versus open meeting, but where my head is personally, and I think I'm going to test this for the rest of the council. I think we're on the same page, but if not, then we may need to go to executive session at some point down the road. My personal belief is, is that on these properties we have surrounding city hall, the 20 plus acres behind city hall and the acres we're talking about, the property we're talking about here, I don't think we as a city are being trying to make money on that property. Where our focus probably ought to be trying to serve the community with these kinds of programs that are aimed at serving our community in, I think I like the lease concept because it gives us a long-term ability to pull back if we need to down the road. But I, without mentioning any numbers at all, just I don't want to see us personally trying to make money on these. I don't want it to cost us money either, but I think we should, we have lands, Scott free, we have other lands that are income generating lands, the industrial properties. I would hope that these lands are for the community, providing the services that we've been talking about for several years now. If anybody disagrees with me on that, if so, please say so.
Mayor, this Scott, I, I guess I, I don't disagree with you, but my, I was, the, the reason I brought that question up was similar to what Forrest alluded to, as well as I would, I, I support the idea. I, I would feel we'd want to have, I don't know what it would look like, an open house or a, a public forum, a little bit more on conversation about that. And hear, hear a little bit more from our community members. And just to make sure that, you know, that they're, they're aware and as we move forward, if we continue with that. And it sounds like all we're doing is committing to, to continue to keep the conversation open and, 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 and work with them if, if, if it does actually come to light that they get the grant.
Good call, Scott. Thanks.
I think you're going to have a little, you know, it's a little of a chicken and the egg thing. So I think they're going to need to have some assurances that the city is willing to, to consider it if they can receive the grant. And having that match a lot of times is important in when, when you go out for those, those type of grants. So I, I think the biggest question is, is this, is this something that council wants to see here? And are they willing to, to consider looking at that if it's something that you want to have, have more? This has been, one of the reasons this went out and talking with them, they're not, we had discussions, should this come out in executive session? And they were comfortable with this being out to the public now. So that's why it's in, in the packet as it's written.
May I just ask for clarification? So, so you're using the word, is the council willing to consider? And you're not using the word, is the council willing to commit to? Am I correct on that? So?
Well, I think we need to have some additional discussion on the language provisions and things like that so that everyone's clear. So that, and have a little bit better idea of what exactly they would need area-wise and things like that.
This is way too early to commit.
Maybe I'm just reading it different than everybody else, but I honestly think motion or if that's what we're calling it, is written perfectly. All I see is potential consideration and can be secured. I don't think it, it says anything about us saying, yes, we're going to do this. It says, if you guys can put something together to where this can all happen, then we'll look at it again. I, I personally think it's a great thing, like, like the mayor was saying, to put on some, uh, from the property owned by the city to help the community itself. So I, I think it looks good. I'm not an attorney, but I don't see anything there that says we're going to do something, is, might do something, or we consider to do something if all this can happen.
Okay. Here though, motion seems to say, it's saying, if we can secure project funding, then we will continue to support development of the project and draft potential lease language. And that's saying though, that's, that can only been, be done only if we secure project funding. Now though, my understanding is the Y wants our commitment prior to them going out and getting project funding. So I agree with Kevin, it's kind of chicken or the egg, but it sounds to me like the Y is saying they would like a commitment from us. Maybe I'm incorrect. I just don't want to, are they saying they would like a commitment from the city of Millersburg prior than going out and getting project funding?
Of course, I think you're reading it different than, what Dave suggested is what our intent is, is that we would just begin to work draft language so that we could have something that if it does come about, everyone knows kind of what the expectations would be on both sides if they were to go out.
Let me, let me try to, try to spot Collins' concern in with Kevin and Forrest. Aren't we at a stage now where we're looking for a head nod? Yes, we support this going forward until we learn some more about that? And then finally ask for a written proposal from the Y that we can actually have in front of us to make a decision at the next council meeting?
Well, the Y is, yeah. So the Y did share with us in the meeting we had last week, they did share that they wanted to know, is council willing, if they are willing, if they can go out and secure, would the council be willing to consider getting a partner and providing property for it if they can go out and get funding secured to, to do this facility?
Does this make it more clear? Or this was our intent was to work with the leadership to support the development of the project and if funding is secured, then draft the potential lease language.
Well, and if project fund can be secured, I would, because draft potential lease language kind of implies that we are agreeing to enter into a lease with them. And so if that's what the council wants, we can certainly do that. I just am concerned that we're, if they go out and get funding, they're going to say, okay, now let's do this city. We still don't know the details of what it is exactly, what, that they want.
Well, they have shared with us. They have asked if, if the city would be willing to contribute property.
Okay, okay.
They would be handling everything else. They would be, they would build and be responsible for the day-to-day operational costs.
So then, so then what if we were to say, and I, I don't know, but are you then willing to say the city is willing to contribute up to X amount of dollar or X amount of acres at the city or, and with the city having the ultimate decision as to where that's going to be, if they are able to receive funding for the project? I mean, that's kind of what we're saying, I mean, that the, the city's willing to contribute property if they can secure funding for that project.
This harms, could we just instead of draft, put negotiate? Would that fix that?
I like the word negotiate better. I agree with you. Yeah. That, that.
Do you want potential still in there or not?
You leave it in please, yes. And if project fund can be secured, to support development, negotiate potential lease language for council consideration. Sure. But that's still, so my interpretation of that is that still, and I hope the Y is going to be okay with that. But my interpretation is that that still gives, even if they get project funding, we're not tied into, to guarantee that we will provide them land. Is that the way you folks read it? Because that's the way I read it.
That's how I read it. And, and I, I, I hope I didn't come across that. I don't support this. I, I think this is awesome. And I agree with the mayor about the, you know, the properties around us and not, you know, necessarily, I think we've already identified, you know, uh, income property and this is really not part of that in my mind, at least. I just didn't want to, yeah, I guess enter into something that sort of ties our hands and we haven't really even had the opportunity to even see really, I'm sure it'll, it'll be a really cool site and everything will work out, you know, if they do get the grant, but it just, it just, you know, just looking out after also just having some community awareness of, you know, us going towards this thing. So I like how it reads. I think it, it hits the point. Negotiate, yeah, I think is a key part that council harms brought up.
The one thing I think we need to, the one thing I think we need to just make clear is, because we did talk about location. So if they're going to do anything and our recommendation to them, I think we had agreement that the current fire station site would be location, because if they're going to do any site plan stuff so that we can look at and figure out the amount of acreage, I think we need to say where that's going to occur.
Yeah, probably for the grant, for the grant purposes, they'll have to identify something, you know.
Can you just put that in there on the motion?
Yeah, negotiate potential lease language for the, what would you call that? The existing fire station property?
I just put city property on the west side of Concert Road.
They're not going to think that's that entire 140 acres or 130 acres.
That's why we got the word negotiate.
That'd be a big facility.
Yeah, that, that's fine. And I, I'm happier with this. And I'm, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's better. How does council feel about this at this point and the draft motion? We okay with it? Scott, they figured out the quiet.
Yeah, I was kind of listening in. I was, I was kind of waiting for answers to come in. This is actually something that I worked with the old CEO of the YMCA on before Chris Reese got in there. Chris Reese is, is great. If there's any, anyone that can make this project work, it's, it's going to be him. I mean, the things I've seen him do is, is amazing at the YMCA now. And so the one probably concern, just kind of listening to everybody here that I'm, that I'm hearing, again, listening in, and I agree 100% with, with Dave and Scott on, on what they're seeing and then Forrest, Forrest also as far as, I mean, we gotta, we gotta watch the language on this. But it really is, do we support the, I mean, and it's going to be something, they're going to be looking for some, some sort of a low lease arrangement with us, whether it's a dollar for 50 years or a dollar for 100, which by the way is what Albany was willing to give them at Timberland Park actually, was a dollar per year for 100, 100 years. They couldn't find the full funding to do that. So that's why they didn't actually build a facility there. I'm, you know, so looking at this now, back, backtracking, when we did the Parks Committee originally, one of the big things people were looking for was some sort of exercise facility, community rooms. And then obviously youth sports programs, which everybody knows I'm a huge fan of. So, you know, you have all those different things coming in. We are one of the fastest growing communities. We are looking at some sort of an after-school program because you have the Boys and Girls Club coming in, which is another big point out I've got to give to Chris Reese. They didn't really have them before, is the coordination that they're having. It used to be two different facilities kind of doing their own thing and then fighting over teams. That's kind of changed and where now they're actually coordinating on those. In fact, the, the Boys and Girls Club has pulled back on, for instance, like their youth baseball program just so they don't compete over to other programs. So it used to be three of them total or four if you include mid. Uh, baseball program, just so they don't compete over to other programs. Who used to be three of them, total of four, if you include mid, mid valley. Um, so. I guess the one thing I'm not really hearing from this is do we support? You know, the possibility of them coming in. I, I know we say that we'll negotiate, but there's a lot of work going out for a grant. Um, and for them to do that, you know, put in that work to do that, do we as a council support that? Maybe that's an executive session thing that, that we need, need to have. Um, I think my personal belief is obviously there's some, you know, there's some fine language that we have to work out on it. But I think this would be a great thing for the city, especially moving forward. This really works a lot with any sort of uh. Parks and rec department that we may have to have moving forward. They kind of take care of it for us. Um, versus us having to look into that, especially with our city having um, so many kids that play sports. Um, we have one of the highest percentages, even though we're one of the smallest cities comparatively to Albany, Lebanon, any of the surrounding. Co- co- communities, but our percentage of kids that play sports is astronomical comparatively to them. So this is, these are things that we have to think of, you know, looking at this.
I think, I think the next phase of this. And I think everybody's talking about it, but not really maybe outwardly is that the next step would be sports fields. Between the school district taking that spot we've been talking about, which is already laid out on drawing. And then them coming in and then there's that, that leaves a significant amount of property available for fields on the north side of that 24 acres. So to me, that needs to be part of the. Agreed upon long-term goal to achieve as we do this as well. That would bill out the entire 24 acres plus this property. But to get back to point, I guess. I, I think we're on track. I guess I don't have, I, I'm not real comfortable. We have a good scope yet, but that's probably to be expected at this juncture. Okay, so. Is everybody okay with where we are?
Well, I would assume the scope would come really quick if they're going out for a grant that's potentially could be awarded parts. I think the scope will be at the top of the discussion fairly quick.
Yeah, right. And that's, and the grant will be achieved by the Y, not, not the city.
Right.
Right, so.
It, it is, Scott, are you, is there something that maybe we can make this? Or maybe we, we move forward like how it's written, but. Are you looking, I, I mean, I get grants and they need support. The more of the support, the team, uh, you know, partnership, the, the more of the better chance it is successful. Is it something that maybe as a city, we could write a letter to include in that and, and direct our city manager to? Uh, you know, to show that we're, you know, interested and want to support this or something like that?
Great comment.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think that'd be absolutely great. I was just listening into the comments and we were getting, really getting into the language there. And it was really just, you know, again, kind of just sitting back and listening. That's why I was, why I was, why I was quiet. If I really listened to what everybody was saying, I think we kind of supported. But I was kind of questioning it, you know, it was, it was almost the point of. Do we support this really if they come back to us? So would I put in the effort to go get a grant? And if I was awarding a grant, would this be where I would, where I would give in? And I guess that was my cons- concern, kind of listening in, in here to this, so.
I'm sorry. You think Forrest though, I think he's being hyper vigilant as a, as an attorney and we're all saying, yeah, we, we want to do this, but also want to make the attorney happy.
Well, yeah, and I am being hyper vigilant to make sure that we're not competing ourselves to something that. Uh, we may not want. And now though, if, you know, I think you guys are bringing up good, good things. I, good points. I think everybody would like that out there. And you could even. Change this to say, if project funding can be secured, we'll commit. To uh, leasing city properties. But I don't know if you want to make that. Commitment at this time. If you do.
I, I think, I'd feel more comfortable if we didn't commit. I, I support the project. But uh. I've just been listening like Scott and uh, you know, I think it's great for all age groups out here, uh, not just the kids, but the older folks too. And uh, you know, I think it can be done, but we're in the infancy stages of it right now and we don't even know what it's going to look like, right? So.
Well, that being said, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I support the, the letter from Kevin that states that uh, we support it and, and uh. Kind of where I'm at.
That being said, what, couldn't you, again, it's just, you know, verbiage, but couldn't you essentially put? Uh, can be secured and will commit to negotiate potential lease language for the city property?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's the same thing. And, and will commit to negotiate potential lease, but those are all wiggle words in there.
Yeah.
Negotiate potential, you know, I could get us out of having to do that if we didn't, didn't work out, but. Yeah, that's fine. If that will help strengthen it, certainly can. I think we will go into this, understanding that everybody out in the community is supportive of it. We just don't know the details of it. We don't know the city's going to have to pay for the infrastructure. Uh, who's going to pay for those? And that's the reason we put in all this wiggle. Word in.
And Forrest, that was one of the main reasons why we had in here is if we do support it. That we could begin working on potential lease, what potential lease language would look like. So we can talk about those things.
Yes.
Every reason for what, so that we can bring something back so that everyone knows upfront, who would be responsible for what portions.
Yep.
Rather than before they go out for a grant. So that that's all very clear. And that was the intent from the original motion. So we could. Have that this is not that we're committing to it, but we have those, those questions and we can bring something. Back so that uh, we could look at.
Well, Kevin, you know, what would be good is if I'm seeing this thing passing tonight. I see that we can start working on the details with the Y immediately. Start with them tomorrow. And we can start on figuring out infrastructure and then bring it back and, and talk with the city. Perhaps. Maybe at the March meeting, we will have a, a draft lease. That they could take for their funding.
And I don't, I, I think it's more just so we have clear who would be responsible for what, what we're providing. Um, and what, what they would.
But will they want that? Prior to them going out for this uh, financial funding?
That I don't know yet.
Okay, okay. So that's why we have some wiggle room in there. Anyway, we can get fired up and moving forward with this thing right away. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments? Thanks Forrest.
Yes.
Do somebody want to take a shot at the motion?
Yeah, I will. Uh, I move to direct the city manager to continue working with the YMCA leadership to support development of the project. And if, and if project funding can be secured and will commit to negotiate potential lease language for city property on the south side of concert road for council consideration.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Dave and a second by Scott McTee, right?
Yeah, that was.
I'm sorry?
That was correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Kind of bring something up there though. Now, understanding this, Kevin, are you saying that they may want to work on lease language? Prior to them going out and obtaining funding?
I don't know that Forrest. What I wanted to make sure of is that if they're going to look at going out for funding. From my standpoint, I thought it was important that we as a city make sure that it's clear who's going to be responsible for what. What we will provide um, to them. Because what we've talked about is that the city would be in the past, the city has said, we're willing to provide the property. And one of the things we had discussions with Chris here brief, when we were out looking at it. Is, you know, you said, what would the city be willing? And what we said is, you know, it would go to council, but my expectation would be the property. You know, the development, everything else and ongoing would, would have to be covered by the Y.
Yeah.
Would be the property.
Okay, it's just because maybe this motion is too restrictive. Because as I read this motion, it's saying first, if project funding is secured, then we will enter into lease negotiations. And I'm hearing you say that maybe they want to at least. Begin lease negotiations even prior to attempting to secure funding. Is that right?
Yeah. I don't know that they necessarily need the lease negotiations. I think just more what the terms would be if this, if it is knowing that. You know, they could come in and say, hey, we've reached an agreement that if we can get this funding, the city is, is prepared to lease it to us for X with these conditions.
That's the way, that's the way I read it as well. I was like, you can, project can, funding can be secured. I, I'm assuming that means. Kevin continues talks with them. They say, we need this, this and this to secure funding. Can you guys do that? He says, can we do this? We say yes. They get funding. Right?
That. The, the intent of the, what we wrote initially for on the initial was. That we could get to a point where council was comfortable saying, if you can get this, make this go, the city is willing to provide you the property. Under these conditions.
Why don't we just enter into starting lease. Negotiations with them at this time? Because aren't those the details they want to know? They're, we're going to want to know what we're paying for and what they're paying for. And then we'll say, yep, here's what we're committed to and then go out and see. See if you get funding. I guess maybe get to, because we don't know if they need that commitment prior to March.
My, my biggest concern with the language we, we proposed initially is, you know, we can talk about lease negotiations, but. That's all null and void if they were never to secure the funding.
Yeah. So are you okay? You think this is what Chris is, you and Chris are looking for is this language here in this motion?
I think we can get, I think we can get there. Yes.
Okay, okay.
And if not, we can come back to council and ask for. Modification.
Okay. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, because it's causing me to wonder, Kevin, how are you going to communicate this decision to Chris? Just a verbal discussion? Are you looking at writing a letter, outlining?
By the time he's done, I'll probably call him and say, hey, you want to meet out in the middle of the street?
Well, but Scott had a good idea. Scott Callan, I believe it was him, talked about a letter from us.
Yeah, I, I think that if, when they get to the point where they are ready to, to go for the, for a grant. I think at that point, it would be good for us to, to draft a letter. And hopefully at that point, you know, if council is comfortable, if they see that they're going for it. And it's comfortable with language that we can come up with on how we will provide what our contribution would be, I think we could put that into the form of a letter.
Okay.
I'd want to bring that back to council first before we, at that point, and I think we would have time to do that.
Anybody concerned whether or not we're all on the same page here? If not, let's go ahead and vote please. Okay, quick. Motion carried. Very good. Thank you. Very good. Okay, any opposing public comment? I think you're the only public here again. Any comments? Okay, anything? Other comments from council? Or staff or anybody? To get ready to adjourn.
Mayor, this count, just wanted to let the council know that um. Uh, I'm going to be meeting with the events planning committee this Thursday. Uh, and seeing what they have going on and that'll be my first meeting with that committee and looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you for doing that very much. I believe, I believe their focus for your meetings will be trying to determine what they're going to do regarding a major event this fall, if we're able to do that. And then of course, a celebration of lights again. So thanks Scott for taking that role. All right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-five unless somebody's got another item. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Thank you everyone.
Have a good night.
Kevin, you still there today? On this new laptop, I have no volume control. It's max hundred percent and I can't make it go, you know, other than off. Is there something? Internal besides the volume control down by the speaker on the lower right?
Scott, he just went off. I was going to ask Scott to take a look at his. You should have on one of the buttons up on top, you should have a volume control. So if you look at your F keys along the top.
Yes.
Do you see any there that have like that speaker with sound and, and X volume? You muted yourself. Still muted.
You're muted. Can you unmute?
Can we unmute him?
I know if he muted himself, I don't think. He tried. Yeah, no.
All right.
You're unmuted.
Yeah, I, I'll play with those. But the, the, what I'm used to is the speaker in the lower right on your screen. You click on that and it's like, it doesn't work.
Is, is it the, I, I'm wondering if it's the software, not knowing where to adjust the volume on there. Do you know how to do that or the computer itself?
I did. That made no difference.
Well, is it using your speaker? Are you connected to an external monitor?
Is it coming out of your laptop or out of your monitor?
I've tried both.
Okay, because I have to. I, I have to switch between, sometimes I'm adjusting one and it, it's using the other one. So it's not doing anything, but I. Have had some issues with that as well, so.
Yeah, I, I had.
Figuring that out.
I had to just turn my hearing aids way down. All right, go on. I'll worry about it later.
Well, yeah, if you want, um, if you don't figure it out.